Meeting in Brooklyn. I'd like to leave this to the United States of America. This is very important. This stands nation under oath, indivisible, the big judges. Thanks for the back and bailing on both sides concerning your cell phone, immediate sleep or vibration. Okay, new business, Rob and Tom, area variance, pretty orchard lane, SBL, D seven point ten dash two dash six point two ten. I'm receiving an area variance for a shed in the front yard.
The back yard.
So, I see, I want to oversolve it. You're actually going for two variances, right? One for the building being in the front yard and another one being too close to the, to the.
Fifteen foot.
Right, with a lot of line.
Yeah.
Okay, so just give us a little background why it has to go there and it can't go behind the house, it can't go someplace else.
Okay, so the only place I have is the front yard. Backyard is covered mostly with septic system, inaccessible area. There is no accessible area for that, actually. It's too tight on one side, there's a stone wall. And when I get to the back, it comes separate, so I can't still go to the septic. When we last saw it, the septic is, can't go there.
So, if you can, for the next meeting, either give us picture.
I have picture.
Okay, perfect. Or, or on your site plan, denote where, where your stone walls are, where your septic is, everything, so we can have a better picture of, of why it can't go.
Okay, the next meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so you want pictures then?
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll.
I have three pictures. One from the road. Down my driveway, flag lot.
Yeah.
And then driveway, just where I want to put it. Part of the, like.
Right down here, right? Okay.
There's a part, parts of the garage space.
And what, what's this right here?
That's basketball court.
Yours or somebody else's?
Mine, okay.
Okay, I just see a page that one, you know, whether it was a roadway or somebody's driveway.
No, driveway, the driveway for the other neighbor's lot, which is maybe.
It looks like another flag lot, that's over here, right?
That, that's probably going to be the side of the street.
Okay.
It's far as San Diego. And then that's just normally you come up to it.
So this is, this is your house here? This is where the car is parked, is where the shed wants to be, or? Okay, so around this side of the house, what's here? Which would be here? You got your well here.
Yeah, this port, port right there.
So this is the basketball court in here, someplace?
Yeah.
Like that, where it is.
It's actually pretty good. And then there's a stone wall here. For the, the actual invasion of this.
You got a seat on?
Oh, yeah.
On that, okay.
And then, and then the driveway comes up to that, this stone wall, and you've got a five foot.
Okay, between, between here and here, like a retaining wall. Like this.
Five foot three, this is the.
Okay.
How big, how big does the shed?
Yeah, yep, right here.
Thirty-two by twenty-six, I think.
Actually, we, the only thing that was on, on the app was the required actual and relief. We did a, uh.
Need your copybook.
This is, this is really pretty significant. Stories, misses, pretty, you have.
One, oh, one, yes.
Okay, yeah.
For, for the second floor of B, got the slip. The slip. Thirty-two, so here.
So, getting back. Okay, oh, so actually keep it and then when you submit it, Sarah will give it to us later. And, and then we. Okay, so on the site, on the site plan, all they're saying there's a pool in the backyard and a side yard, where's?
Pool in the backyard. Yeah.
Oh, perfect.
There you go. So the area, this is the area behind the house where the pool is. Top of the area comes up on an angle, through the septic system. So you're, you're closing, bring in a frame here? Yes, fifteen, the corner, the back corner of the, about fifteen feet, that property. I didn't. What, what's here? What would block the view of this? There's a road, there's a road, white lines. Yeah, there's a road, white line. You can see it, it goes from the corner of the driveway where it enters the property, out and all the way to the back. And Chuck and Jeanette was in front of me, they had a raised septic system that's right now.
So, so we're exhausting every. Is this a shed right here?
Yes.
An access between this shed and this wall? Can you access to get over here, to keep it behind the house?
Yeah.
Why?
Cause the stone, there's a retaining wall.
I see a retaining wall. Between this shed and this retaining wall, is that a steep grade, is it?
It's steep on the back. You said it was a five foot grade.
Yes, he said it was five foot from, from the front face to the back face of the retaining wall. And I see the driveway comes kind of around like this, right? Parking area, driveway. Um, and, and the reason why we're going through all of this is because of building the front yard, really hard ass. Something that we generally don't do. So, you gotta make sure we've exhausted every possibility to get to the point where we say yes or no. So, between the building and the retaining wall, what kind of elevation change do you have from the driving surface? To here, is that also about a five foot over, I would say, what, thirty feet?
I would say probably more than that. But the problem wasn't, if I do get to the back of the house, where would I put, where would I put?
Right, and that, that's, that's another thing, right? Cause you, you'd require a variance because you'd be too close to the lines here. Yeah, and your septic is here, here?
Right there.
Right in here?
Exactly right there.
Okay, what's this right here?
Garden.
Oh, that's a garden and that's another shed.
Well, the spades are going up. It works.
So does, does any board member have any more questions or comments, concerns for the, for the applicant?
Back up, back about, out of the house, coming through. Um, well, the pool shed is there, you know, the, the house, the pump. Um, that's it, just, you know, nothing, you know, just.
So, when, when you, when you revise this, your site plan, show everything that's there on the site plan with offsets, like from the corner of the, of full house to your property line. Give us as much possible information as you can, and you can take that and, and do it off of that as well. You know, you don't necessarily, I said, here, you can give us dimensions off of that and, you know, pencil in where your septic is. Give us as much possible information as you can. And it'll speed the process.
Okay.
Um, okay, so if any board member has any questions, comments, or thoughts?
There is, there is a hill, you know, where, where the forest park. If, maybe that provides up to about five feet, either way, greater, so. I know it appears to be when you have a two-story structure, but by the time I dig into that hill, it's going to be all over. The other thing too is the septic thing. If you, you have to kind of put it on that side. Where you're gonna, you know, how, are you gonna be able to get it in the public?
Okay.
Another thing you have to look at too. Well, septic's in the back, okay? And having the truck there near the pump. And he's always, I got a pump, couple of, pump to the front.
Okay, and, and on there, when you do it, if you can show us in total, like you were just talking about, from the driving surface to where a building's gonna be, show us an elevation or a grade change, an elevation and a grade change from your shed to where your retaining wall is. The more information you can provide, the better it's gonna take, the more, you know, speed the process along.
Okay.
Um, like to entertain a motion to set up a public hearing for our July eighth. Rob, second, on favor, aye? Okay.
So I want.
Uh, Sarah, what's our date in the line?
I think thirteen, I'm just a little jacked.
First name is that one?
Thirteenth.
Good. Like I said, okay, be mine.
I recommend that you guys take a lie out there. There's, there's no way. All that is, is really thick from, you know, how, where the shed was, deep, there's this little shed. There's no way anybody could have seen it.
Okay. New business, Pupino's Food, commercial area variance through a four station road, SBL, D six point one dash one two point one hundred. Absolutely seeking an area variance for a five percent building coverage and a one seven percent lot cover. Okay, this is all.
And I have the.
Yeah, I have a copy. Um, while I won't leave the other board members. Yeah, I have a, I have your copy that you presented. All right, there you go. So, give us the lay to land and.
So, um, we are seeking people who can make this in their house. And our plan is looking at eleven, eleven, this is, this is a tiny building. Um, and basically, we're preparing for, for parking, um, to move the parking from here to, through here.
Um, we, we don't have a latest copy. We have it without the loading docks for the proposed building. Um, we, we don't have, uh, the latest copy, we have it without the loading docks for the proposed building, so. Yeah, in favor, I have it, which you originally submitted.
Okay.
So that's, that's the new improved, right? That's what we're, we're called, okay.
Yep. Um. So, and, you know, Patty had prepared. That test. Um, the area variance saw only thirteen hundred fifty square feet. Was worth those two acres. The question thirty-nine, two-five percent. First time.
So I, I see in what you submitted, um, that the applicant has combined three parcels. To consolidate them into one parcel. So on your, on your map, Sarah, can you bring that? Up or down, so I can see the top of the page. Top right corner, I just wanna make sure it's the same as the one I have.
Peter is being sluggish.
Okay, so on your. Yeah, so top right corner of what you have, you have the two parcels listed with separate SBLs. And that's not the case, right? You combined the old railroad bed with the parcel that you're proposing for the, for the coverage variance, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So. Originally, the, the property that, um. Surrounded. Was not owned by Pupino's. Or, uh. What name did they use for the?
It's really supposed to be Pupino's. No, I'm not named.
Pupino's Pup's. So my question being. To alleviate some of the, uh, building and lot coverage, uh, variants that they're requesting. The applicant, because they also own a joint and property, could combine. Say, the piece behind. There to add to that, to decrease their ask for percentage on building and lot. Um, have, have they considered that?
No.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, you have, oh, all right. So you, you have considered it?
Yeah.
So that, that's part of our task, right? So. We get the least variance possible. So if you combined and, and I was out there, you and I walked it, that's wet back there, right? It's, it, it slopes down from, from the, uh, improved grade, I believe that's, that's wet.
It's a little, it's something else that I wanted to, I don't know, maybe talk to Antonio, to, to David. This is the lake on the far, that has got a draining pipe right to the, piece of lane, uh, in the back.
Mm-hmm.
That's the only wet part that I've seen.
Okay.
I don't know if it does that for Pupino's, that pipe draining on my property now.
Okay, so you, you wouldn't. Come up, come up this way, Sarah, we need to see it. Move it sort of, so I'm looking at the bottom of the page. So yeah, your total is going down, right? Three, three six, three four, three two, three eight, so this is sloping down. And I know this area over here, when you and I had walked it, was wet. So I'm assuming this is kind of wet back here.
Three, no.
No? Okay.
Like I said, the only wet part is right here, right? Um, almost at the borderline with the.
Right here?
With the, no, little bit farther, but somewhere around here with the lake is right here.
Okay. Okay, so on, on, if you don't mind, just, I wanna just kind of go over this on the map. So this is the piece, you combine this one and this one, right? Cause the old railroad bed. So if you. Do that, and this to this, it brings, it brings what you're asking down, which is, which is easier for us to do.
We were just hoping that I already started. We talked about these, uh, next changes, right, then we got like two or three.
Right, so if, if, if you're, if you're. Doing that, you're willing to do that.
Yeah.
It's less of an ask, it's, it's easier for this board to say. Yes to the lot coverage because you're, you're lowering your density because you're increasing the, the total size of the parcel. So.
How big is that piece, yeah, would be?
Well, this is four point fifty-six. Yeah, four, six, two, so, I mean, you're adding. Let's say one and a half. But, but whatever you add decreases the percentage of coverage. So whatever he adds, bring the ask down, and that's what we need to do, we need to, we need to minimize the variance.
Well, you said that. What he's asking for is thirty-six hundred square feet? No, it's, uh, it's, it's almost twelve thousand, almost twelve thousand. It's like, if, if you see the existing pad that we had in the back. I believe that was a wooden building, I don't know, when I thought it was in there. There's the sixteen pad that we wanna use and it's about twelve thousand square feet.
That's not right.
Well, that's impervious already.
It is, it's a concrete pad.
Right.
Right, so what there is over here, they're looking, they're looking to increase parking on this side. So the building, the building is lesser than ask because it's already a concrete pad. With that, but the impervious, they're looking to take this. Looking for a twenty-seven percent. So if they take this piece back here and add to it, it brings that number down. Which is what we're looking at.
I agree, I, I understand. So, all right, so. Well, yeah, I understand that. He. He's trying to lower the number, you try and give him what he needs.
Right.
So. We went through this before. We went through it.
Right, so what I'd like to do, to expedite the process. I, I'd like to entertain a motion to set a public hearing for our next month's meeting. What you guys could do, or Patty or, or Control Point could do, was if you're willing to add that parcel that's behind this to it, and then we'll do an evaluation of what your percentage was without it, to the percentage with it, so we have an apples to apples. So it, it would be less of an ask, it's, it's an easier, it's an easier ask for the board to, to bring. Right, I'd like to entertain a motion. In favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, does any board member have any questions, comments that they want the applicant to, uh?
I want to see that.
This, okay, yeah, oh, um.
No, I need to see that.
Oh, yes. Oh, he wants to see the updated, uh, the updated property lines as proposed to add, to add the part.
But we are. Yes, yes, yes. Right, and we want. We mentioned. He's asking for twenty-five, uh, twenty-seven percent and five percent. With the new proposal, I want two categories. Right, what he had and what he, he's gonna, the new proposal. And what he's giving out. To satisfy the lowering percentage.
Right.
And I don't think that's been hard to ask, and I think.
Right, and, and that'll be a good starting point, and from there we can kick off, you know, if we're still above an acceptable threshold, we can talk some alternate methods of, uh. Uh, impervious parking areas, some, you know, something like that. But, but this, we gotta keep bringing it down as much as we can. All right? Thank you very much. See you guys in a moment. All right, public hearings. Really Susan, Eric Terry. Really Susan, Eric Terry, one big lab with the brick and raw bathroom, SBL eighty-eight and seventeen, ten, ten, thirty-two, three point two hundred and eighty, seventeen, ten, ten, four. Continuing area variance for proposed block two for rear yard setbacks and area variance for proposed block one for a side yard setback. The one, um, who owns the Teta property. He had discussed it, had, uh. Drafted resolution. Um.
We just kept the public hearing.
Right, we kept the public hearing open, is there any member of the public that wishes to be heard, either here or? Online?
There's no one on.
Someone that I heard? Um. Okay, so is the board familiar with the draft resolution, you guys read it, everybody good? Do we have any questions or revisions? So the board is familiar, I think. You can just read the balancing test ball. Should I read the whole thing into the minutes, or is it, I mean, it's?
It's really entirely up to you, I should, that's, and it just came out there for. Some clauses, some, some balancing tests.
Um, all right, again, I think, I think we'll, I'll rip through the balancing test and then we'll, we'll do the verage after that, that way, if anybody is online or whatever, they're kind of important. Um. Pursuant to New York State Town Law. Two sixty-seven B three B one granting a request of variance for the project was not produced under variable change in character of neighborhood or detriment. Neighbors and applicant has demonstrated that the lot size will not impact the number of developed parcels in the neighborhood or will be no visible change to the character of the neighborhood and all involved structures are existing. The area variance will simply allow a change in an existing lot line to fix an encroachment so that each lot will own the area which the respective occupants have been utilizing. Therefore, no underdurable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to the neighborhood will occur. Two, pursuant to Town Law. Two sixty-seven B three B two benefits up the applicant from the project cannot be achieved in any feasible way without the requested variance. The only alternative is to remove the structure, including a garage, pool, pool house, which is not financially viable. As a result, there is not another feasible method to achieve the proposed without an area variance. Three, pursuant to Town Law, two sixty-seven B three B three, the requested area variance is not substantial. The lot area, side yard setback and building coverage variance are minimal, although the rear yard setback is substantial numerically. Topography of the site necessitated the location of the previous structure. In addition, the variance is solely between the two subject parcels, parcels and will not impact the neighborhood, therefore the impact will not be substantial. Town Law two sixty-seven B three B four granting the requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environmental conditions in neighborhood or district as variance. And lot line adjustment will not cause any environmental effects surrounding neighborhood. Stating the question, one, there are, will be no visible changes to the character of the neighborhood as all involved structures are existing and will be no physical change that could adversely impact the environment. Five, Town Law two sixty-seven B three B five, the applicant needs for a request variance is not a self-created difficult. Building encroachment on the neighboring parcel because the parcel has been owned by one family for generations. The construction of the pool and pool house took place over the years without regard to the location of. Divisible boundary lines, beneficiary to the state is now seeking to remedy the issue. All right, now for, now therefore be further resolved that based on the applicant's application, reporting information including the applicant's project plans and public hearing on the application, variance because the applicant's request for the variance proposal is granted. So in Town Law sixty-seven B three B, going to one hundred fifty-six, such as the following conditions. Okay, before we vote, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Two, second.
On favor?
Aye.
Variants approved shall run with the land and shall bind any successor in interest to the applicant. And be further resolved that this resolution shall be filed with the town until it's perfectly complied with the doctrine and copy sense of the applicant. Further resolved that the resolution shall become effective immediately upon adoption. Like to entertain a motion to adopt the variance to, uh, convene the applicant's variance. I'll make that motion. Paul? Second?
Second.
And Russ? Okay. So, aye, Paul?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Russ?
Aye.
Come on. Four ayes, three parrots. We gotta get into saying anything for that. All right. Welcome G, area variance one and twenty-five, Fifty Fifth Road, SBL ninety-four point two dash two dash eighteen point one thirty and ninety-four point two dash two dash eighteen point one forty-one. Applicant seeking an area variance for. Lot area proposed lot two is a new buildable flag lot, two point zero four acres in size. Flag pole is point one six acres in size, which may, may not be counted towards the lot fence either, or a relief of point one two acres is needed. All right. Public hearing is open, do we have any member of the public present or online which is to be heard? Okay.
Any motion for the public?
I think we're not, that's our, all right. Do your little. All right, so motion to close the public hearing? Second?
Right.
Us, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Um, has the board familiarized itself with the resolution and draft it? Okay, the board have any questions concerned or comments? Revisions? Okay. To the balancing test. So New York State Town Law. Two sixty-seven B three B one granting a request of variance for the project was not produced under driver change in character of neighborhood or detriment to the neighbors as the applicant demonstrated that the lot size will not increase the number of available parcels in neighborhoods and both meets all setbacks and lots dimension as listed in the pound law, zoning code, and table, the area variance will result in only. Imperceivable lot line adjustment. Therefore, no underdurable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to the neighborhood will occur. Town Law two sixty-seven B three B two benefits up the applicant from the project cannot be achieved in any feasible way without requested variance, the applicant has entered into agreement with the neighboring landowner to purchase additional property to minimize the requested area variance to the greatest extent possible. As a result, any other configuration would increase the necessary variance. Three, Town Law two sixty-seven B three B three, the requested variance is not substantial. The point one two bigger area variance is a six percent of the required lot. Area is therefore not substantial. Four, Town Law two sixty-seven B three B four granting the requested variance would not have adverse effect or impact on physical environmental conditions in neighborhood or the district lot line adjustment will not cause environmental impact to surround the neighborhood. Both subdivision has been designed with regard to potential environmental impacts specifically proper. Separation distances have been implemented. With the topography reviewed, it can consider the placement of the proposed half driveway well, septic system to avoid any adverse impact to the environment, as a result, the requested area variance not have adverse impact on physical or environmental condition in the. Five, Town Law two sixty-seven B three B five, the applicant needs. Requested variance is a self-created difficult, the current owner purchased the property in two thousand one when the requested lot size for residents reduced in the zoning industry with money for making parcel eligible for further subsidizing. Since the purchasing of the property, the town code has lamented to increase the minimum lot size of the resident owned in the area. Only district to two acres, as a result, the need for an area variance not self-created. Questions, comments? All right, now for be resolved that based on the applicant's application, reporting information including the applicant's project and as a public hearing, the applicant various requests, the applicant's request for variance for the project is granted. the applicant first request, the applicant's request for variance for the project is granted pursuant to two sixty-seven B three Bs, only code one hundred dash fifty-six, subject to the following conditions. Variance shall run with the land and shall bind any successor in interest to the applicant as, as this resolution will be filed with the Town Board within five days, and the resolution shall become effective immediately. Alright, usually both public hearing quality. Alright, entertain a motion to grant the variance as requested. Bill? Take a second. Russ? It is an aye from myself, Alder Lurds. Bill Brown? Russ Gilmore?
Aye.
Thank you, very. Yeah, our. I'm gonna greet you out. Okay, so, administrative. removal of the minutes on May eleventh, one more meeting. Everyone familiarize themselves with the minutes as written? I read them, they are concise. I don't know what division these, entertain a motion to approve the minutes as written. So, Russ? Second?
Aye.
Paul? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh. Okay, one more piece of business, the applicants, uh, Razzie and Pinos and like to forward their application to the planning board for their, for their input.
Planning board's already seeing the Pinos.
Okay, um, who need something from the planning board to maintain it, if they do or do not have any input, and change for Razzie. Anything? Any motion to adjourn? Bill? Russ? Second? Aye?
Aye.
Alright, thank you, y'all.